Begin this meeting of the Board of Supervisors for Patrick County. Tommy Shepherd will have the invocation.
Well, to God, we come to this meeting tonight and ask for your spirit to be poured out. Lord, it's that time supervisors are meeting. And they need your help. They need your guidance. They need wisdom and understanding. Because, Lord, they're going to be talking about money. We all love money. So, Lord, we just pray that wisdom will be instilled, insight will be given, and understanding. For I pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Mr. Kendrick, would you mean this is a pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of the U.S. military serving here and abroad and all EMS and other officers who service? May be seated. If anyone if anyone wants to sign up for public comment, make sure you get your name on sheet there or witness stand. We will have approval of the meeting agenda. I think Dury has a couple of things to hand.
If we may add Senator Stein pressure under addition to the motion room as well as approve resolutions for AIC and TRRC under addition.
All right, with those additions, do we have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
All right. Mr. Simmons? Mr. Kendrick? Ms. Darrell? Mr. Perry? I'll vote aye also. Approval of the meeting minutes? Do we have any comments on the minutes that we have? If not, we'll take a motion to approve them.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Simmons? Mr. Kendrick? Ms. Darrell? Mr. Perry? I'll vote aye also. Approval of the bills, claims, and appropriations. Any questions, comments? Then I'll entertain a
I've got one, Clay.
All right.
I noticed we've had that discussion before, but a 911 chair, one chair for $2,339.19.
I didn't catch that. Did they do that this time?
Yep.
Any comments?
That's for
911 operators?
It's for one of them. It's a larger chair.
Okay.
But I wonder if they got any bids on it or whatever. That's a lot of money. We discussed that thing about a year ago and knocked it out, didn't we?
They did previously, and we requested that they push that one further down. And so that's what they've done. They got the other chairs first, and now they're moving in a request for this one.
And that's the best they can do for one chair?
They got one.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Mr. Simmons? Mr. Kendrick? Ms. Darrell? And Mr. Perry? I'll vote aye also. We will now have our public hearing. All right, Norma Bozomire, Smith River.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Norma Bozomire, 181 Red Oak Lane, Buffalo Ridge. My husband and I moved to Patrick County full-time in 2013. We chose Patrick County because of its natural beauty and the sense of community. We quickly got involved in volunteering in many areas of the county. I volunteered with Karen Harms Landmark, Reynolds Homestead, Trail Hands, Effie Bowles, Bull Mountain Arts, Master Gardeners, the library, tourism, DARPA, Green Team, just to name a few. So I'm getting a good sense of the community through my volunteerism. I found myself frequently in and out of the tourism office in the county building to brainstorm with Sandra Belcher about county tourism-related projects. Although she was very inviting, the office wasn't. Then she set up, and they all set up, the beautiful visitor center. What a welcoming, beautiful spot. Such a symbol of how wonderful this county is and how much we can be proud of and share what everybody's doing here. Most people that know me know I'm passionate about my projects, and I'm one of Patrick County's biggest cheerleaders. Everywhere I go, I brag about the county, even though I didn't grow up here and didn't hold a job here. But I just love this county and all the wonderful things that are going on. I send visitors and locals alike to the visitor center to get information. Everybody I meet that I haven't seen in town before, I say, "Go down there, get a map, get the information on the festival and see what's going on." The visitor center puts Patrick County on the map for tourists. It's now a central part of the upper main part of Stewart. It's important to keep it to maintain that sense of community that Patrick County has. A few years ago, I gave a short speech at Reynolds Homestead Volunteer Recognition Dinner and said how impressed I was, how the people in this area work together. Volunteers just step up and get the job done. I've seen it over and over at events and working on projects. Master gardeners do it. They show up, solve the problem, get it done. No bickering, no controversy, no drama, no accusing. They just get it done. Lately, I've been disappointed in what I hear, see, read about, how the county fights about money with the school, with the tourism, with the library, with the town of Stewart. It's time to work together, the way the volunteers organizations work together. We all want what's best for the county. Let's work together and get the job done. And lastly, we moved to this county, and we never had an expectation that taxes would never go up. It was an affordable place to live, but the bills have to get paid. It's appreciated that residents' costs are being considered, but it's more important to support our wonderful schools that work with so little, the beautiful library that we all enjoy, and recently had to cut a book budget to pay their salaries, and the inviting tourism visitor center that brings money back into the county. This is what makes Patrick County great, and I know I'm proud to live here, as I'm sure we all are. Let's work together and please get the job done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have Lori Atkins, Peters Creek.
She's coming. She's coming.
All right.
I'm sorry, my son is calling with heart troubles. What I was proposing is to do a Christmas festival over at Rotary Field, and I've got a couple of mocked-up flyers. They're not anything, they're not finalized yet, but things that I'm trying to work on. But the point of this would be to bring the community together, but also as a fundraiser toward the hospital. And there's a lot of things that I think that we could do to help bring in funds toward that, and we wanted to bring it to you all for consideration.
Okay.
Let me bring this out.
Thank you.
I kind of wanted to be here to know if you have any questions. I can try to tell you a little bit about what we're planning to do, but that's what we're talking about right now.
All right, well, we'll certainly consider that. I think that's, you know, a good idea, but we'll put it on the document. All right, do we have any questions or comments for our speakers? Mr. Simmons?
We have none.
Mr. Kendrick? Ms. Darrell?
Just thank you for coming.
Mr. Perry?
No, thank you for that. It's, I always enjoy hearing things and getting excited about future things to come.
Thank you all very much.
Yeah, thank you for coming, and thank you, Ms. Bozomire, for sharing your opinion. Appreciate it very much. We were going to have a public hearing. Do you want to speak to that, Ms. Hazelwood?
I don't have anything to add to it. We talked about the last meeting. It's just time to interrupt at that time. If we're supposed to choose to take comments, which we didn't have any pertaining to the public hearing, so unless you have further discussions amongst yourselves, if those are a public hearing, it takes some action.
All right. Does anybody have any comments? Perry? All right. Then I'll accept a motion to amend the budget for fiscal year 2122 due to an increase of grant funding in the Patrick County school budget.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Simmons? Mr. Kendrick? Ms. Darrell? Mr. Perry? And I'll vote aye also. All right. We'll hear now from Mr. Jason Wood, Superintendent of Patrick County Public Schools.
Can everyone see that fine?
Yes.
It's on that wall. So I do want to discuss our proposed budget, and we also have some comments about the current fiscal year budget that we are currently in and some issues that have arisen since I spoke to our committee meeting. But, you know, the first slide I have there, there's a video from Channel 7 News that talks about what are we up against in the school system. Surrounding school divisions are offering 14% raises, three steps. And so, as you'll see as I go throughout the presentation, we are already behind. There's already a huge gap in what we're able to do for our staff, how we're able to fund our school system. And that gap is only getting larger. You can imagine if we were able to give a 10% raise at our salary and another school division that's already got a larger salary than us gives a 10% or 14%, that gap just continues to widen. And at no time this year have we had a fully-staffed school division. Apparently, we have 10 openings. And projected next year, eight teachers, a principal. You know, the staffing needs that we have in the school division are a must because our students deserve to have the best staff in front of them every day. So, you know, with increased expectations and demands of the job, you know, there's not a lot of people getting into the profession. And so we need to do everything we can to retain our best staff and to recruit the best teachers that we can. So, again, what are we up against? We are up to a funding crisis in the school system because we can no longer expect to get the same stellar results out of our school system if we don't start doing things differently. Again, at no point this year have we been fully staffed. And I know our staff, our students deserve that. So the next few slides are how we compare. You know, our per pupil expenditure is second lowest in the region, and we spend about $10,324. And you can see all of Pennsylvania County is below us. And so, again, we do an amazing job, but we can no longer continue to think that our school system is going to be ahead of the learning curve, one of the bright and best in our region if we don't start doing things differently. So, again, for comparison, our teacher salary, our average teacher salary is $44,000, which is the lowest in the region. You can see there, people that we're trying to recruit and retain, they can drive to Salem and make an average pay of $60,000. That is a huge difference. And we can't blame our staff members for doing that. I kind of don't want to get this word out too much to our current staff. I'd hate for them to leave. But the opportunities in our surrounding region is outrageous of how much more money they can get and the benefits that they can pay them. Some other staff positions. You can see there, this is just comparing Henry County, which we seem to swap and share a lot of the same applicant pool. You know, every position I could pull up, Henry County pays more than ours, and they provide 100% benefits. You know, one of the most alarming there is school nurses. Our average salary is $35,000 for a school nurse, and in Henry County it's $48,000. So we're not just talking about instructional positions. We're talking about the safety and well-being of our students. We need to have the best of the best and retain them to make sure we provide not only the great education that we've always done, but also focus on the mental health, safety, and well-being of our students. So I know there's always discussion about, well, the administrators, they get paid so much. But if you look at comparison, again, all I can do is provide you the facts. How do we compare against other school divisions in our region? Our average administrator salary is the lowest in the region. So our average salary is $69,000. And again, they can drive within an hour to make over $100,000 on average.
Excuse me, can you go back to that just one minute?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry, I missed what you said. Your average is $69,000?
Yes, the average administrator salary is $69,000.
Okay.
And this comes from the Department of Education. You know, this is a 2020 report on how schools funding positions, the number of positions we have. And as I continue with our comparison, you'll see the same old rhetoric about, well, there's too many people at the school office or we have the largest, too large of administrator staff. You'll see that we have the smallest.
What do you define, I'm sorry, but
Yes, sir.
What do you define as an administrator?
Well, these include your central office administrators, principals, your directors, and your entire technology department is included in that number.
Okay. All right. Aren't most of these that you're comparing it to a lot larger than us?
Well, no, sir. You can see there, our comparable ADM is closer to Floyd, I mean to Carroll. We are larger than Floyd, larger than Martinsville. And you can see
Larger how?
With our ADM, the number of students in which we serve. So we are not the smallest
But I'm talking about the size of the county and resources.
Our
Henry County is a lot larger than we.
Correct, and they fund their school system a lot better. Like I say, based on, you look at how we are funded, we're funded by the number of students in which we serve. So we are not the smallest on the number of students which we serve, yet we are the lowest paid. For teachers and administrators and all those other support staff positions there, like school nurses, teacher assistants, bus mechanics, you have to pull up any of those.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. So again, you know, there's a lot of comments, well, you have too many central office administrators. That is not true. If you look at our region, we have the smallest administrative staff. But again, we are not the smallest school division. And if you compare our school division based on the enrollment of students, you can see there, we are still the smallest. So this is based on, we have 40 administrators in those categories, central office administrators, building principals, directors, and technology department. You can see there that based on the number of students, we have the smallest. And this was 2020 numbers. So in my proposed budget for fiscal year 2023, we're down to 37. So our school board has worked trying to save the county money. We have not replaced two office positions at the school board office and also another director position. So our administrative team is getting smaller, but as you can ask any of our team, the number of reports that we have to do, this keeps getting larger. So just in comparison, you know, again, we are not the smallest school in our region based on enrollment. Patrick County's administrative team costs $694,000. Carroll County is $780,000. And Martinsville, which again has 1,000 less students than we do, $989,000. Floyd, again, has less students. There's a $720,000 for their administrative team. And Henry County, yes, they are larger, $2.2 million to fund just their administrative team. So the same comments that we're over, we're busting at the seams at the central office is just not true. We have the smallest administrative staff. And we are doing that to try to put our money where it needs to go into classrooms, instruct students. So one other, a good comparison that we have here is we are not, we don't have the largest per pupil teacher ratio. So we're right average with other rural school divisions. Ours is 12 students per every teacher, which again falls right in the range with our region. It just shows you that we are putting our money where it's supposed to go in front of students teaching them.
Mr. Wood?
Yes.
Okay, you said there's one teacher per about 12 students. Is that correct? How many teachers aides do you have?
I can get that information for you.
Okay, because my understanding is the student-to-teacher ratio is one for 24, and you're only required to have an aide if it's over 24 students in classrooms. Is that not correct?
For the K3 classroom reduction money? Yes, once it gets over 24, you have to get another teacher. But again, that's why we elect, our school board elects to participate in that K3 classroom reduction size funds so that we can hire the additional teacher that we need for kindergarten and first grade and third grade, up to third grade classrooms once they get over 24 students.
That K3 classroom fund is an optional fund, is that correct?
Yes.
Not a requirement?
It is an optional fund that our school board votes to elect, yes.
That the board did not opt fund last year, correct?
Our school board voted to participate in that sense.
The county supervisor said we would fund two programs. That was not one that we said we would fund, is that correct?
I was not in those discussions. But back to that, you know, when I, I've had several calls with the state finance office at Department of Education. So what I want us to do as we move forward is there's a governing school board who voted to elect to participate in these optional programs. And then there's the appropriation board, which is the board of supervisors, who if our elected school board votes to participate, then are by law required to fund those programs.
That's not the information we have gotten. It is not.
I want to be transparent here to the citizens of the county. Last year, the board of supervisors decided to fund two of the five optional programs. The school board put to the state, to the DOE, that we would fund all of them. That's why there is a shortfall.
And according to our information, we are not required to fund those programs.
I was part of that last year at the school board, and I do not remember at all being told that we were, you guys were going to pick and choose. I do not remember that at all. I just remember the number, and then Dean saying that he was going to try to certify it and try to make it work. And he said that in an open meeting there, too. It's on record.
I have
And he has a letter that he sent once, too. Is that true? Does he not have a letter that he sent saying?
There's a letter dated in July of 2021 stating that there's no guarantee that we will make require local match this year because we were not funded to require local match. Again, I
But that, according to our information, is not required. Local match is not required. The local effort is required.
That is correct. The local effort is required by law.
Right.
If the school board who is elected votes to participate and match programs, and I'll get through that in a minute, then the appropriation board has to fund that. If they don't, they will get a bill from Richmond.
No.
I'm sorry, but if it's optional, how can you tell us to fund it?
It is optional for our elected school board. They do not have to participate in it. If elected school board votes to participate in it, then appropriation board
That's not our understanding. That's ridiculous. There's no reason for you to come to us. You ought to just go on and do what you're going to do.
That's correct. I can, I could ask for more than required local match. And then you have the discrepancy, yes, sir, no, sir, we will not want to fund you above required local match. But again, I went to the new superintendent's meeting, had new school board members there. The first thing they said is there is, a board of supervisors does not supervise school.
I understand that. I understand that.
There is an elected school board who is voting to participate and match programs. The appropriation board must fund those, or they'll get a bill from Richmond.
So you're, you're telling the citizens of Patrick County that the school board is the one that's running up this bill, that we said no. And so if anybody has a debate, they should come see you.
I would be glad to sit down and speak to anyone, sir. Our students deserve it. It is money that we need to participate in. I'll show you, every dollar you spend, it gets tripled with state money. Triple.
Well, see, you're edging into that, we don't care about students. Let's not go there.
I'm not saying it, sir. I'm just saying
Who said it? Students deserve it, which implies we don't care about what the students deserve.
Mr. Chair, ma'am?
Yes.
There's enough of this, that side and his side. This is a very simple fix. Have a liaison meeting, get the state on the phone during the liaison meeting, and get this out of the way. That's the easiest way to do this.
We had the state on the phone.
Well, they have two. That's what I'm saying. They have two, and you guys have. Let's get together in one room and make that happen so everybody knows exactly what's going on. That's the easiest answer for this. That way, you know, you can't, they can't say, well, this happened, or they said this, or we can't say that. Everybody knows exactly what's said in that meeting, so everybody's on the same page.
Correct. And Ms. Hazelwood and I have been meeting speaking with the same individual that the department had.
Well, we're being told two different things. Well, we're being told two different things, so maybe it's a bad idea.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not saying it to be rude to anybody, I just think that's the best, best idea for everybody to get on the same page. Let's just get you guys together and meet and see what happens.
I'll continue to, so we'll wrap this up shortly. So county budget breakdown, again, there's comments that the school system is more than half of the county's budget, and that is true. However, you also have to compare apples to apples. We're also forty-three percent of the county's revenue. So you can see there, forty-three percent, twenty-four million dollars. Again, that's state and federal funds that come to the board of supervisors. And we just simply turn back and reappropriate, reappropriate that to the school system. So of tax money, of the burden we are on the school system, it's nine percent of your total budget. So if you take out the forty-three percent, the twenty-four million dollars that you receive in revenue, if you turn them back and appropriate to the school system, then we become only sixteen, eighteen percent of your budget, which we are not the largest burden on the taxpayers. So again, just our revenue, this is just the school system. Seventy-one percent of our revenue comes from the state, that's that twenty-four million dollars. Then only eighteen percent comes from the locality. So for next year, it's very similar, the composite index for Patrick County has gone up, so that percentage goes from eighteen percent to nineteen percent. And I know there's always a lot of discussion about how we spend our money. And so again, just this graphic shows that we follow the Virginia School Board Association model budget guidance. So you can see there that for instruction, you should expand sixty to sixty-five percent on instruction. We run school, rural schools, we have one in every community, which I think is amazing. So we are actually a little bit above budget at sixty-six percent for instruction in our schools. Operation and maintenance should be ten to fifteen percent, we are under budget there. Transportation should be three to five, ours is six percent, again, due to us running rural school divisions, buses in all localities. Technology should be three to five percent, again, hires a six, rural schools, and we have a one-to-one device kindergarten through twelfth grade. But there, you can see the green is central office should be three to five percent. Our central office budget is below budget of only two percent. So next year's budget expenditures are very aligned, and I won't go through that again. But just so you know, central office, health, and attendance, that's that administrative column again, it should be six to ten percent next year, it's four percent. So again, we're under budget with administrators. And so there's been a lot of discussion, and this, I won't go through the presentation of all our grants, but there's been calls to us about, how about the additional money that's been appropriated to the school division? And all that extra appropriation has been grant funds. And all our grant funds come with stipulations for, we bought seven buses, so it cannot supplant our current operating budget. I cannot use federal grant dollars to pay for current people's salaries. Now, we have added mental health people, we've added student success coaches, we've added PE teachers at the elementary school. So all of our expenditures are on that budget presentation there. Anyone has questions, wants to go through that, just let me know. Again, just to be clear, the extra appropriation money cannot supplant our current operating expenses. The next three slides there are our proposed budget for this next year, for twenty-two, twenty-three, so this year twenty-three. And when we run the calculation there, it becomes six point six million dollars, which is an increase. But when you look at every budget that's been proposed by the House, Senate, or the new governor, it's record education spending. So again, our composite index went up in Patrick County, so the portion that the county will be responsible for is also going up. So in summary for the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, you can see there, our total budget for this current year is twenty-nine million dollars. For next year, it's going to be thirty-four million dollars, an increase of three, or four point three million dollars. And that increase also includes a six point six million dollars in local funds. I built the budget on two thousand three hundred eighty-five students, which is a decrease of about thirty-five students. Also in the budget highlights, if this is the calculation tool or the budget that is passed, there's almost two million dollars for construction renovation, which we know our old schools need. Some of them were built in the thirties, and so that requires no local match. So that is a great focus of education from our governor and general assembly. There's a minimum five percent pay raise this year and next year, decrease in the employee portion of health insurance, hiring additional teachers, hiring athletic trainers, and also capital projects that we are behind on. So again, everything we're putting into the budget are needs that we need for our students.
So the state is saying they need a five percent salary increase in your proposed budget is for ten percent, eight percent, correct?
Correct. So there just, I shared this online, the real estate tax comparison, there is us compared with the same schools in our region, and our personal property tax comparison with our schools in the region. So that kind of is a summary of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget. However, in do, in creating this budget, we found that when we ran our calculation tool based on our March average daily membership, our enrollment, we are not meeting required local match this fiscal year. And so, and by conversations with the Department of Education, they're instructing me that either we receive those funds from the appropriation board, or they will give the county a bill for that amount to meet required local match. And what happens in school finances, there's an annual school report that I have to complete in spring, I mean, in the summer after our books close. And if I cannot certify that we received required local match, then the county would get a bill in January twenty twenty-three for the funds that the school system did not receive. Again, that's, I would be glad to have that conversation. Jerry and I have been working and speaking to the same individual, Department of Ed, and that there is an opportunity for us to recertify and say we're not participating in these programs. But as our board directed me upon Thursday, if we do that, our school system will lose one point eight to two million dollars between now and June. And I don't know which program we would cut, or how we would make payroll if we had to cut two million dollars from our current budget. So you can see there, just a closer highlight, depending on the calculation tool that's approved, there are two amendments for this fiscal year's budget. It can be five hundred and twelve thousand dollars or four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars that the appropriation board would have to pay the school system to meet required local match. Again, those are the match funds for us to provide pre-K, do at-risk fund, compensation thing, all the things that have already been certified that we are participating in. And we are receiving state funds for them because we have certified, the school system did, that we were participating in them all year long.
How many pre-K students do you have?
Seven.
How many? How many?
Seven. Seven.
So you have ten vacancies right now for teachers?
We do.
And what's been the average across the year?
It has been in the single digits up to, and they're not all teachers, I mean, two-part time positions, the full-time position, and again, when we're talking about the safety of our schools, then it's, it's an issue to make sure that we can hire those staff members.
Well, what happened to the money that you would be paying them?
Oh, we're hiring substitutes, we're trying to hire additional cleaners and provide more cleaning stuff, I mean.
Substitutes don't get as much as regular teachers.
That's correct, they don't.
So you, there's some money there.
It does not change required local match, what we have to receive from the appropriation board. So if you look at, again, there is the governor's budget, which we, is at the bottom there. We are, we are at a deficit this year of four hundred ninety-two thousand dollars. If the House amendment to this fiscal year's budget is approved, we would be in a deficit of five hundred twelve thousand dollars. A Senate amendment, then it would actually drop to four hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars.
And this is, these are amendments?
The top two are usually in a biennium, there are no amendments to current fiscal year budget, but there is this year. So it's a rarity, but there are two amendments to the fiscal year twenty twenty-two budget, which we will not know until sometime in March. And this is based on our March first average daily membership. So when I found that we run our calculation tool to see if we're meeting required local match, and we were getting more error messages, so two Wednesdays ago, I brought the error message over to Miss Hazelwood. Just, I can be as honest, for transparency, like we are not meeting required local match. So that was Wednesday, two weeks ago. I immediately called a assistant superintendent at the Department of Education, and he's instructing me, well, you need to run your March first ADM, because between March first and March thirty-first, there should not be huge discrepancy. And when we did, again, it's still showing we are not meeting required local match because required local match would have been five point seven million dollars this fiscal year, and we are only funded five point two million dollars by the locale. And so in that time span, I met with Miss Hazelwood again, had the same conversations. She also called the Department of Education, I don't want to speak for you.
They have.
But there was a conversation about, well, the school system could recertify and say, we're not really participating in all those programs. But when that happens, that's when I'll show you in a minute, that our school system would lose one point eight up to two million dollars, depending on which amendments pass. Between now and June, we would lose that amount of money because we have been participating in those programs all year. So again, I'll show, show that in, well, I'm going to skip on down to that. So you can see there, if we do not receive the five hundred twelve thousand dollars if the House budget's approved, then all that two million dollars there, we will not receive from the state between now and June. They won't send us a bill for that two million dollars, we just will not get it. So in our other revenue source from the state, they will withhold two million dollars. If the Senate has passed, they will withhold one point eight million dollars from the school system between now and June. And you can't see there, but the current governor's caboose bill or budget is also one point eight million dollars. So I can't recertify and say that we haven't been participating in something that we've already been doing. However, if that was an option that we, if the school board did direct me to do that, yes, the county would not have to pay five hundred thousand dollars, but the school system would lose two million, and that is huge for our school system.
It's huge enough for the county.
Yes, sir.
I said that five hundred and twelve thousand is huge enough for the county when we ain't got, what, a hundred and fifteen thousand in contingent fund?
But I know five hundred thousand compared to two million is a huge difference. So where are our funds? I say our tax dollars, I'm a taxpayer, I had these same conversations at my parents' home when all the brothers were over. Where are our tax dollars going, because, you know, born and bred and going live and die here? So just where are our tax dollars going? The main part of our local tax dollars helps offset state funding because the way the state funds are is based on SOQ standards of quality positions. For example, we are funded for a hundred and forty teachers for SOQ positions. We have, or have on average two hundred. So if you just look at average teacher salary in Patrick County, sixty teachers is three point four million dollars that we don't get, but because we run rural schools, I'm glad that we do. Three point four million dollars to make sure we have teachers in front of students, we have to have it. Support positions, which would be my assistant superintendent, directors, school-based admin assistants. You know, we only are funded for forty of those, and we have well more than that. And the way, it's kind of comical, but sad at the same time, we get funded for twenty-eight percent of my assistant superintendent's salary, but I have to have one, I have to have a designated by law to sign off in my absence, so the state only gives us twenty-eight percent of her salary.
Well, where does the rest of the salary come from?
It comes from the other programs we participate in, the local, the share, so that's what I'm saying.
So we're paying for it?
Our, yes, and that's, I can fix the state funding formula, I'm just telling you, we have to participate.
I understand, but how many principals do you have at the high school?
I have one, and they only funding, only give us money for eighty percent of that.
You have one?
One principal, yes, sir.
What about assistant principals?
Three. Again, the smallest admin team in the region, and we are.
Well, my granddaughter went to Calum in Virginia Beach, and they had just four assistant principals. Two thousand, over two thousand students.
Yes, sir. Again, smallest admin team in the region. Some others, you know, we talked about the safety, and where we have our students. Maintenance and custodials only fund us thirteen, and there's no way, we are the largest employer in the county. And so to imagine the way that it's funded, it's sad, kind of complex. Four CT teachers are funded. What could we provide our students if we only had SOQ positions? And when, think of the programs we have to have for students to make them job and career ready, but the state only funds four of them. So that's the shortfall. We have to have those positions. And another one, our entire transportation department, they fund my admin assistant and transportation director. I get no SOQ funds for bus drivers, none. But all that is a burden that when you collect state money, local money, federal money, all goes in. We do not have a inflated staff anywhere. So again, our local dollars go to these at-risk or, you know, preschool, at-risk, infrastructure operations, compensation supplement, K three class size reduction. Again, these are funds that our school board votes to participate in. And I was directed on Thursday to continue participating in them this fiscal year. They had a verbal vote to participate in them for the twenty twenty-three fiscal year. So again, that helps determine what our required local match is going to be. So again, when I was talking, it's a triple-year investment. So the locality has to give us a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars to run our pre-K programs. The state turns around and gives us four hundred and fifteen additional thousand dollars, which we have to have. At-risk, the locality gives us about three hundred thousand dollars. The state turns around and gives us an additional nine hundred twenty-one thousand dollars. So you can see, we have to participate in these programs to make up for that SOQ shortfall that I was just describing. And infrastructure and operations, I know there was a question about what's in that nine hundred thousand dollars. So again, some of this is, it's kind of sad, but funny. You know, we have to spend forty percent of that on technology equipment, so you're already getting that number down, but it's for technology devices, buses, pavement renovations. And then sixty percent are for reoccurring costs, like fuel costs. Our fuel budget is two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And we're the largest employer in the county, you can imagine, running our fleet, two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Maintenance supplies, a hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars. Utilities alone, again, it's the largest employer in the county. Our utilities cost six hundred and ninety thousand dollars a year.
Is that based on last year?
Yes, that's last year's numbers. Insurance for our, not our school health insurance, insurance for our facilities and our fleet is a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars a year. So one final comparison, again, that we're talking about, we're not the, we're not the smallest. Comparing us to two school divisions in which we are larger, you have Patrick County, Lloyd and Martinsville. We are larger than both of those. Our budget last year is twenty-nine thousand dollars, we run seven schools. So on average, if you compare the number of schools which we run on our budget, we run each one of our schools five hundred thousand dollars cheaper than Lloyd and Martinsville. Again, we have more students. If you look at the enrollment, we run our schools. we run our schools $900 cheaper per child than those two school divisions do. And we're here asking for the minimum. So, there's a comparison of how we compare required local match with other schools. I know we cannot compare us to Montgomery County. Montgomery County funds the school system $20 million above required local match. Henry County, $4.3 million above required local match. Lorry, $2.5 million required, above required local match. And that will stay the same next year, because I'm asking for $0 above required local match. But we do have that shortfall this year. We are $500,000 in the range. So, again, next year's budget is going to be $6.6 million. I know that's a hard discussion for y'all to have, as you set your tax rate. This current fiscal year, it should have been 5.7. We were funded 5.2. So I know it's an increase, but it should have been an increase of $900,000. But now it looks like it's an increase of 1.4 million. But again, that's because there was a shortfall in this year's required local match, which we actually were funding.
So if our board says, we're not going to fund a 10% and 8% salary increase, but we'll do 5% mandated by the state, and you submit this budget, what happens?
But, no disrespect. When I run the calculation tool based on our enrollment, and my board has elected to participate in all five of those match programs, the number 6.6 doesn't change. $6.6 million will be required local match that I'll have to certify in the summer of 2023, did we make, make it or not?
So you're saying, whatever your school board says, we have to do?
Or require local match. Anything above that, yes, you have the discrepancy to say, I'm not funding you a dollar over required local match. Why am I asking for a dollar over required local match? I'm asking for the minimum. Required local match.
And local effort?
Yes. So, at the local effort, is mandated by law.
And that's where the salary is?
Ma'am?
What, what does the salary fall under?
Well, all that is in our entire budget of, you know, you've got the state has an increase. We're getting $900,000 for the salary increase from the state.
Well, I want to know, where do the salaries fall under?
It's under every line item for administration, teachers, everywhere. But because our school system has been running every school, again, if you compare us March 1st to Lorry, every school's $500,000 running more efficiently. I don't want to say we're more efficiently. We have been doing with that. So, again, our finance team, and myself, school board office, are looking at how we're going to retain and recruit the best teachers. So we're taking our budget, which is, again, the required local match, $0 above it. And we think that we can compensate our staff, so we can retain and recruit. So, again, how it finalizes, when the different budgets come out, which everyone approves, maybe we can't give that amount. We're trying to give that amount to retain and recruit our best teachers. Because our students deserve to have the best in front of them.
Ms. Sandoval?
Yes.
I think, was you asking where the, where the payroll, yeah, where the salary? I think, were you asking where they fall as far as local effort, local match?
Yes.
A lot of it falls under both. Yeah, it falls under both.
So the board could work with board of supervisors and not do the 8, 10%, take a 5% state mandate, correct? I know what you want. I'm talking about what is mandated by the state.
The percentage salary is, yes, 5. If a school system elects to do more than that, they can. Again, that does not decrease required local match by the appropriation board.
It sounds like a main question, as it has been for years, to determine what the minimum is, what that the county's got to do. So that's what we need to figure out.
Ms. Hazelwood, you want to speak to your conversation?
I mean, we've spoken about it.
Yeah.
If we elect to participate, and again, I've been directed to this year. They have voted to participate in those match programs, because we have to, to run seven rural schools.
Maybe it's time to close the school. Maybe it's time to close the school.
I hope we never have to. I hope we never have to. Again, our budget is based on the number of students we have. If I had two schools at 2,385 students, the appropriation board still has to give us $6.6 million.
Okay, I, I think we'd beat my dead horse. Does anybody have any final questions? All right, thank you very much, sir. All right, now, let's not do that, please, for anybody. Excuse me?
I'm sorry, but laughing?
Yes, let's not. I mean, for anybody.
We're just acknowledging.
All right, Ms. Sandra Belger.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak. It's an honor and a pleasure. At each one of your desks are the magazines that I've kind of put together. Each magazine has an ads, ads for Patr County. All right, Amy? What in the world am I doing wrong?
Can I plug in the HDMI?
John Jinx. All right, can everybody hear me? All right. So, find yourself here. That's the Patr County. It's a brand slogan, find yourself here. Get lost. Come to Patr County and find yourself here. So, there we are at the Patr County Visitor Center. So, one thing about, I'm very passionate about tourism. It's, it's, Patr County is a perfect place to market every inch of the county. Tourism is an instant revenue generator for rural counties in economically disadvantaged areas in southwest Virginia, such as Patr County. Local government, governments rely on tourism for a large percentage of the revenue to invest in local infrastructure, like schools and roads and so forth. The latest plans of the tourism department, our, our job is to always draw as many people, as many travelers to the county as possible. So our latest idea was a visitor center. I traveled along the, the region, and there were visitor centers of all kinds. Welcome centers, they're called welcome centers, visitor centers, and that sort of thing. So, the overview of the visitor center are, we're open Monday through Saturday, 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, and Saturdays from 10 to 4. We have the honor of having a volunteer that is paid through Goodwill Industries to work 16 hours a week. She works on Saturdays. The visitor center has local lodging information, events, brochures, books, magazines, stickers. We have a little area, a nook, for artisans that come in and want to display their art along with their business card. And so, we are, we're, we're a little bit of everything. We do merchandise sales. It's a place for the community to meet. The master gardeners meet in the, the visitor center, as well as the young professionals have met there. Also, the visitor center welcomes, welcomes a lot of people to the county, new, new homeowners. And they're excited to be here. One of the things that we hear quite often is, everyone in Patr County is so friendly. So that's a wonderful thing to hear. Startup costs, total startup costs, we moved in last January, end of January of 2021. This includes signage, paint, fixtures, decor. Operating cost is roughly $13,000. Merchandise purchases, these were T-shirt purchases, that also included our, the amount that of purchases used at the festivals and giveaways as well. Merchandise sales are around $2,500. We can only accept cash, so sales are, they are what they are.
Sandra, is there any way to be able to exempt regular debit cards, like the Square or anything like that? I know there's an issue with the, some of the treasurer's office or somewhere, that, that could take place, but it takes place in other visitor centers. Is there anything you can do to make that happen here?
We talked about that, and the biggest thing is, the only way we knew was for it to go into our main checking account. And that's just too many things hitting our main checking account. The auditors don't like us to have some separate accounts, so that's probably something to refer. We did talk to the auditors. I'm very protective of, of the bank accounts. And so, I mean, you know, you're talking about people coming from everywhere, cards, and if something goes haywire, and they, they get our account and they have access. So, I have been a little hesitant with that. I'm not saying that there's not a way. We just haven't figured it out yet.
Okay. So I think sales, like Sandra said, sales would probably increase if, if that was an option, because a lot of people don't...
I don't remember exactly. I know we talked to Rogers and Farmer Cox, and somebody else, yeah, I don't remember. I know that we talked about the Square, and we went back and forth and back and forth. And I would have to go back and read my notes to see what the whole synopsis was. I honestly got the initial.
Okay. I think it'd be great to be able to do that if we can all possibly.
So there's a lot of information in the visitor center that's available for locals and for travelers. We started out trying to track our, our travelers with a Chromebook, and, you know, we're going through the process of, some folks do not like to, you know, mess with technology very much on vacation, which I don't. So, we decided to get a guestbook. Some folks weren't registering the guestbook. So, we, we've got a clicker, and that seems to work quite a bit. The visitor center probably officially opened around May during the tourism week. We entertained the Bull Mountain Arts, Master Gardeners, the Willis Gap Community Center. Reynolds Homestead had a lot of activities going on, Fairy Stone State Park. The center has welcomed travelers from 26 states. Last week, all the colored-in areas are from where the, our travelers have, our guests have been, are from. Last week, we even entertained someone from Maui. So it's exciting to learn where people are from, and they're excited to learn about our area. And the visitor center is kind of like a one-stop shop that will, you know, just let people know that, some people come into the, the center and say, hey, what can we do for the day? I want to go to this part of the county. The county's so big that, you know, they're, they'll go to different parts of the county. So, we usually give them three or four itineraries, and they're on their way, and they're happy. So, the numbers are off due to COVID, as well as, you know, due to basically starting, kind of opening up in the middle of the year. But, you know, they are what they are, and they're roughly around 1,400 to 1,500. Now, I applied for, to become a certified tourist information center through Virginia Tourism Corporation. The hierarchy of marketing the destination is, Virginia Tourism Corporation is here. They reach out to the local director of tourism's and the tourism department and chambers, and they provide marketing information to use. And one of the ways that they help the local destinations is through a tourist information, certified, becoming certified. So, as we, you know, wrote the business plan, jumped all through all the hoops, we did receive certification. That means information in 11 welcome centers, book quantities, bulk quantities of the Virginia Travel Guide, that is everywhere and anywhere, listing in the travel guides and free registrations at the annual seminar, which is coming up at the end of this month. The 11 welcome centers, you show the statistics here are from January to June. Our closest welcome centers are Lambsburg and Rocky Gap. The folks from Lambsburg and Rocky Gap have been here, and they know that, they've seen our visitor center, they've been inside it. They've also, I've also given them a fan tour of the county. So, when Shirley at Lambsburg talks about Patr County, she also talks about the visitor center as a destination. So go to the Patr County Visitor Center, and you're going to all the information you need, as well as Larry and Amanda at Rocky Gap. So, we're very much in tune with the welcome centers. On another, another note, in the month of April, we will take over the Lambsburg Visitor Center and just hopefully decorate it with all kinds of Patr County events, flyers, rat cards, that sort of thing. I just emailed everyone today, the entities that put on festivals, the tourism-related businesses, folks on the mountain, folks in town, to allow the tourism department to take their information, their marketing information to the Lambsburg Visitor Center, and keep that information there the whole month of April. So, Patr County will be in the house at the Lambsburg Welcome Center all the month of April.
Do they allow, allow you to sell merchandise in there, Sandra?
I don't know. That's a good, that's a good question.
You're going to have representatives there from time to time?
Yes. We do have, and also, we do have the Stewart Rotary. They're going to have a beach festival weekend there. So hopefully, the fest, the entities that, festival organizers will, will take their, you know, their big flyers and posters and stuff like that, and, you know, use that as a time for marketing their events as well. So a total of all the visitor centers from January to June of last year was 203,000, and that's during COVID. Imagine what it is when it's not COVID. You know, it's, it's just incredible. As Norma had said, we are open, the tourism department is in the visitor center, and we have a much greater connection with entities and nonprofits, such as Dominion Valley, Willis Gap, One Family, you know, PCMA. We get the, the one-on-one connection, the inside scoop, and that inside scoop... And that inside scoop is directly funneled to the travelers. For example, before Christmas last year, I was told that Kremlin was now back open to the public. So right off the bat, we could start marketing Kremlin again, the planetarium, the saloon and the pub and that sort of thing. So it's, it's not only a connection to the travelers, it's also a connection to the festival event planners, tourism-related businesses. We know what businesses are, you know, open, what are not, when to do this, when to do that, and, you know, that sort of thing. So it's, it's quite fun and interesting. The COVID impact, as you can tell by the next slide, you can't see in the red, this is numbers from Virginia Tourism Corporation. For Patrick County, we're down almost 20% in traveler expenditures from 2019 to 2020. We're also down almost nineteen percent, 20%. I think it's registering nineteen point nine in local tax receipts. So hopefully, well, as what we're seeing, there's a lot of pent-up aggression. Everybody wants to travel. They may not want to fly, but they want to travel. And that's one of the reasons, one of the good parts of the fact that the visitor's center is open now, so that we're receiving a lot of visitors now, but we are in position and ready to hit the ground running and service our travelers in the best way we can. The visitor's center, if anybody hasn't been in, it's a one-stop shop. It has a little bit of everything, as I have expounded on before. I think, I believe that we're an extension of the hospitality that is prevalent in our county. Our staff talks one-on-one with the visitors, and, you know, we can give a individualized, we can give individualized attention, and we can help the visitors feel, you know, like they're valued instead of, you know, picking up a phone and getting someone on the line. It's, you know, it's not, we're not a world of automation, or they're not going to receive that when they come into the visitor's center. So with the pent-up demand after COVID, it indicates that visitors who knows all there is to know about a location will spend more money, stay longer, and become repeat vacationers. So, and that's what we're doing. The icing on the cake is that the visitor's center's operated with lodging tax. So is marketing the county, and so are tourism salaries. They all come from the lodging tax. That's tax paid by travelers when they stay overnight. Neither real estate tax nor personal property taxes pay for any marketing Patrick County. So it is the icing on the cake. And another icing on the cake is we, hopefully we've started going in the right direction as far as the pandemic is concerned, and the visitor's center is open and ready to serve the community and all the travelers. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Denise, I would just like to add, I have a better than the board of revolution. I do remember checking on part of that. And what I discovered is a lot of the tourism departments blew their own entity, and it wasn't flowing through the local funds, and that's how they do that. So we're in a whole different ballgame than trying to get our bank account or us handle another bank account. And that's why I'm stopping there.
So they have the authorities versus banks, I think. Thank you.
And I'd like to add, the cost of operating the visitor's center is less than one page in the Virginia Travel Guide. And for every dollar spent marketing the county, seven dollars comes back to the county. It's a seven-one ratio. So it's, it's a good investment. And I thank everyone for supporting us and hope that everyone will continue to support the visitor's center and the tourism department, because we're in it heart and soul, and we appreciate everything you do for us. And Patrick County is a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. So we're, Jerry, are we going to vote on this tonight? Okay. Let's have any comments you have, Mr. Simmons?
I just appreciate the tourism department, things they do. Makes to have a visitor's center up. The station will increase. I think it's a good thing that I have.
Okay, Mr. Perry?
I'm just curious, do you have any expectations or estimates of what some of the local venues and events you're partnering with may, what projection the summer looks like? I mean, I know it's a, who knows what's going to happen, but what does this look like if we're just looking at an increase with things or what are you involved in? And what are the expectations for the summer?
Well, as last year progressed, folks, travelers would come into the visitor's center looking for places to stay on a Friday afternoon. And I would call around to entities. Most of the lodging was full. So lodging is doing very well in the county. And I, it's just going to increase, because the thing about Patrick County, it's wide open spaces, so you can get lost and find yourself. So, and that's a good thing when we're in the middle or coming out of a pandemic. So I'm thinking that the numbers are going to, you know, triple, quadruple.
Now, roughly, how many events are we looking at for? I know we have what, tons, three, four hundred?
Events, major events, at least over, let me think, 15? Yeah, we, I mean, that includes the town of Stewart as well. They have three events. So, and then we have other events, Wayside, Front Porch, Bluegrass. And then the merchants are starting to draw people into the county from North Carolina as well. So that is our target market, North Carolina, all of Virginia. So, yeah, we, we want to make people, the community aware of tourism in the county so that they can, you know, share with their families and friends. But we all, our target market is North Carolina and Virginia.
I hope we're looking forward to a very productive summer.
Those expenditures are going up. Thank you.
I would just say, I think visitor's center is worth the investment. And so I hope we'll keep it going. But I'll entertain a motion to continue to support for one year the visitor's center.
Like in our motion, is it going to 30-day a month-to-month at this point, if you left your budget?
I'll say.
All right, then we'll continue on a 30-day, that's the motion, 30-day until after the budget. Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick? Mr. Tywol?
Aye.
Period. I'll vote aye also, so we'll continue till we see what we got. Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
All right, on the comprehensive plan, we just need to schedule.
Schedule a public hearing.
Public hearing. All right, so we have a force to schedule. My eyesight is bad. I was about to use Braille on here. To schedule a public hearing to adopt the comprehensive plan on April the 11th. Do I hear a motion for that?
I'll make that motion. I'll say.
All right, Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Tywol?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye also. So we will have a public hearing to adopt the comprehensive plan on April the 11th. All right, the dangerous dog ordinance. Are you going to go present?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In reviewing your ordinances, it became abundantly clear to me that the dangerous dog ordinance was in extreme need of updating the provisions made by the General Assembly as your ordinance was last adopted in 1993. So what I have before you is half of the ordinance. I'm still working on the other half. But I just wanted to give you a kind of an idea of what it would point to look like, because there are numerous significant changes that happened in years since I've gone to get your local ordinance up.
All right. So it is before us to schedule a public hearing to adopt new dangerous dog ordinance. We already have one, as he mentioned, but this is to update it. The motion?
I'm like, that motion is scheduled a public hearing for April the 11th, six fifteen.
All right, second.
I'll say.
All right, Mr. Simmons? Mr. Kendrick? Mr. Tywol? Mr. Perry? I'll vote aye also. All right. We're going to schedule a public hearing to set the tax rate to March 30th, but Sandra wants to speak to us, right?
Yeah.
Yes, you do want to speak to us.
I thought Jerry was going to ask. So this is just a proposal, okay? Some of us have talked, and I've talked to Jerry. But this is just a projection to reverting your counting back once your billing, instead of twice your billing. You've kind of got a window of opportunity here because of COVID funds that have been received, and which has been a big blessing for the county, because as you recall, a couple of years ago, the county was in not such a good situation, and we've had RANs in place and so forth. Now, with that being said, we're at the crucial point of what happens when we go forward, you know, because COVID funds want to end, and that's kind of where we are with how we go forward. So you do have a window of opportunity here to possibly go back to once your billing, if you so chose to do that. Just a few of the ideas, looking and taking this projection into play, is I took the current balance that we have in general counting, took off the remaining balance that, let me rephrase this. This is based on current situation. So this is based on the five-two going to the school. This is not taken into consideration anything that was talked about tonight by Mr. Wood or anything like that. It's not taken into consideration whatever the school's portion would be next year. It's talking about right now, as we stand. So the remaining balance current to go to the school is six, two million, six hundred seventy-nine thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars. So take that right off the top, because we know we've got to give that to the school, and that's what we have promised to do. So anticipated the revenue from March, April, May, and June, that was glory, and got estimated expenditures. And so took off BSS expenditures, took off anticipated payroll. We do very well. At the end of June, on my projections, we would have about, just projection, I want to make that clear, around three million, well over three million dollars. Then when you get into July, of course, if you don't do, my proposal would be is if you wanted to do this, is that we go ahead and we send out bills in April, like we normally would, in two parts. So for real estate, real estate bills will go out in April. But instead of having a June 5th due date, you would have an October 5th due date. Your change would be that you would make all taxes come due October 5th, real estate and personal property. There would be no more twice a year. There would be, everything would be, you wouldn't have, you know, we've all heard it, you know, well, you bill me at vacation time, you bill me at Christmas. That would take care of all of that. You would have, you know, you would have two bills going forward, your real estate and your personal property, all due October the 5th. So to get us to that October 5th, you would be losing that June revenue this year. And so I was kind of trying to do a projection to see if we could make it. It gets a little tight around August, really tight. But again, I kind of projected on the least amount possible. I kind of kept my calculations low. This did not include any transfers to the school. Now, that's not to say that we're not going to give transfers to them, but I went back and looked, and in the past years, last year, we didn't have to give the school any money from November. And that means, because when you approve the school board's, the county's portion to the school, and then they come and get their appropriations, I'm told to transfer it on an as-me basis. So I give it to them when they need it, when they're falling short, their funds just not there to cover it. So this will be your 21, 22, our first transfer to them was in November. This will be your 2021, we had a transfer in October. This will be your 19 and 20, we had to, and this will be your before that, 18 and 19, we had to transfer funds in September. But even at that, if, this is going to take everyone working together. But if we could make it and not have to transfer the school any money for September, if we had an October 5th due date, September is going to be your big revenue month like May is now, because your funds are going to come in in September. So I think you would be able to make it. And then, you know, you've still possibly, you've got the COVID funds that you made, I know that you have, they're appropriated, how that they can only be spent, but still, yet, that frees up other things that you're not having to pay because you're having to use COVID money. So this is kind of like your one-shot opportunity to be able to do this. Reasons for doing this, it will give you more time to set the tax rate. That's always been an issue of setting a tax rate before you have finalized the budget and been able to know what you need. You know, kind of when we got into the situation of having RANs, because we had a tax rate set, no increase, fell short, couldn't raise it at that point, so there we were. So this would give you more time to set your tax rate. Another reason, another pro for doing this would be your corporation, your public corporation taxes that we do. The real estate corporations, what we do, when the commissioner does those, and I'm not trying to speak for her, but she and I have talked, when she does these in, for the June billing, they don't have the information, because they haven't turned it in yet. So that comes in with the personal property. So they have to guesstimate, I call it, and they base it on last year's and then information, and then we have to adjust on that second half, which is due in December. We've had refunds, and we, and some of them are minimal. And, you know, you've got, you've got a dollar seventy-one that you're flipping back and forth because you did collect it or you didn't, and then you've got bigger amounts as well. But I'm just saying that you've got bookkeeping things that you have to deal with that gets complicated because you didn't have the exact correct information to begin with. So that will free up all of that. Needless to say, you would be sending out bills, you know, one time as opposed to twice, and so, you know, hopefully we would save some revenue there. My proposal would be is that you still send a bill out in April with the due date of October 5th. And again, to all the citizens of Patrick County, I appreciate them. It's a great bunch of people. They're very good in paying their taxes. This is just a proposal, so please, and everyone get mad at me. This is, you know, some people like the twice-year billing, some people hate the twice-year billing. You know, it's just a suggestion. I know the board has talked about it. But the reason for going ahead and sending the bills out in April this year would be because you do have some that are going to go ahead and pay. And therefore, you would get that money back in, which would give us a little bit of a safety net to get to that first October 5th. So that would be my reason for recommending that we go ahead. You know, therefore, you buy them a little time in June, they won't have to pay taxes in June. They are going to have more to pay in October, but in essence, the end amount is still the same. With that being said, if the taxpayers get concerned and say, well, I, you know, I've gotten used to doing this twice a year. You know, how am I going to come up with all this money at once? Especially if you have a tax increase. You can prepay your real estate taxes. We do have people that do that. You can pay on them, come in and make prepayments, and you can even have your bill paid, and, you know, by the time it's due, you can so choose. We do always tell them if the tax rate is not set, all we can collect on is based on last year's rate. You pay, if you owe two hundred dollars, and you pay two hundred dollars, and the board has a tax increase and it goes to three hundred dollars, you're going to get a bill for a hundred dollars, because we didn't anticipate the tax increase. We have no way of knowing that in my office. So, you know, there could be an increase. But other than that, you could pay in full. Personal property, we cannot get prepayments because the information is not out there for us to process. We have nowhere to go. for us to process, we have nowhere to comply payment. We have people who would love to do that and I'm sorry, I just don't have anywhere to do it. And, but this is just a suggestion, I don't know if Jerry has anything that she wants to add.
Yeah, so, you know, the big thing is we run into every year, the board is trying to set a tax rate before you really got into your budget and that was one of the biggest reasons for starting this session and also savings, like she said, on posted, it's less burden for their office and there's a lot of good things to go back to with Chair Billings. But as she stated, everybody would have to work together, all the outside agencies, the schools, everything, because if we don't have the funds at the time, it's hard for her to put these funds, she don't have. So we would all have to work together in order to make that happen. But all I'm asking, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, would you like to put it out to a public hearing and let our public citizens come in and talk to us about it, see what their thoughts are on going back to once your bill?
Can we do it in the same public hearing?
Well, you're going to have to decide what you're going to do because I got to send bills.
It'll be March thirtieth.
Uh, well, I was over here in April, sorry.
We're going to have to send April.
You don't have to be in April, you have, you have an ordinance that specifically states that you do it twice, you've done it twice a year, so that have to be amended. And in order to amend that ordinance, you have to do public notice of newspaper, trailer certification, once a week for two successive weeks rather have.
So it won't happen till next year if you vote on this?
No, we, no.
No, this is.
I think what they're saying is they want it to happen now and I'm just not sure you're going to have enough time with the newspaper advertising requirements, can that change your time? But, I mean, it's going to be.
The only thing it could be is you could delay mail interviews. I mean, that's not, you know, then if you turn around and give a June sixth, I mean, technically we require, you know, to, you know, it's fourteen, you know, we always try to give the taxpayers as much time as we can, but, you know, we was, we're above by far as early as we mailed them, but, you know, it still brings that revenue back in that sooner. So if we had to push it just a little bit to delay, you know, your revenue coming in, but, you know, you're possibly going to change that to October the fifteenth anyway, but, you know, I guess, can you, did they discuss it? They can't discuss it the thirtieth and then run it and test it again.
Let the citizens come out and share it while it's coming.
So I don't know, you know, let's say we make a pushback, this is probably your only opportunity in the near future to be able to do this. So, you know, I'm for if you can get it in April and Phil's saying this, we will have everything ready to roll. So as soon as you say go, we'll send the bills to the printer and say process them. And they're really good about getting them out really quick. So we could probably still have them. Yeah, yeah, we usually mail around in the twentieth of April, somewhere in there. So if we had to go to the.
All right, ask a question.
Sure.
So that means this year and moving forward every year, we would have time to get into our budget season and do everything we can before we have to set that tax rate. All right, well, let's, we need to set the public hearing for the tax rate.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me? Sure.
So we do need to set the tax rate, schedule the public hearing for March the thirtieth, not to exceed seventy-three cents per hundred of sets valued for this year, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget year. County exercises twice year billing for real estate taxes at the current. Tax rate must be set in March so that the billing process completed in order to correspond with the due date. Based on the deficit of expenditures over revenues of eight hundred ninety-nine thousand, six hundred seventy-eight dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-three, I am recommending a five cent tax increase to the real estate tax. And I do make a motion to.
All right.
To public hearing.
Do we have a motion, have a public hearing?
Make that motion.
A second.
Second.
Thank you. So this is just for the public hearing. Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Tywalt?
Aye.
I'll vote aye also. So do we want to go ahead and set the hearing for the, the once a year?
Not yet, we have to advertise for that, or we can, we have to do a two week notice on that for the April the eleventh meeting.
Okay.
I think that should be the second time.
All right, so we have to leave, we go ahead.
April the eleventh meeting.
So we can set, all right, so I entertain a motion to set public hearing on April the eleventh to move to once a year bill. If I have a motion.
Make that motion.
Do we have, I think. Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Tywalt?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
I'll vote aye also.
I would like to say also, because there will probably be a lot of questions about that and I'm not sure how, but April the eleventh, I will not be able to be here, I'm going on a much needed vacation. The Lord's willing, I can get there, I know I'm not fine, but I am going on vacation. And so if anyone has any questions that they, or any information that you want from me about this, or any of the taxpayers or constituents want information, please contact me prior to the eleventh and I will be happy to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sandra. All right, the building permit fee rebate, are you going to speak to that? I mean, yeah.
So this is provided to us from Mr. Chairman, who's not able to be with us tonight, but this is a Patrick County incentive that we participate in, the permit fee reimbursement is reimbursed and granted cost of local property fees. We would like to get these approved tonight as we are participating in such programs.
All right, do we have a motion to adopt this building permit fee rebate?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Sure.
All right, Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Tywalt?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
I'll vote aye also. Let's carry that.
The next item on the agenda is the two resolutions that have been added to the agenda tonight, one for the ARC grant and one for the T R R C grant. You should have received those via email. We also have copies here for you tonight, but I would need a motion on both of those resolutions.
All right, do we have a motion for the ARC resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll say.
All right, Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Tywalt?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. Resolution for the T R R C. Motion.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll say.
All right, Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Tywalt?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
I'll vote aye also. So those are finished. And now, move. Is there any point in looking at our options?
No, the committee, yeah, the committee Thursday morning after your board package have gone out, so we won't have information in until later.
All right, so we have.
We have to move that.
All right. Hazelwood, your report.
I've been spending a lot of time, as Mr. Wood said, in conversations with himself and myself, I have, over the last week, particularly trying to figure out, you know, what we can do and if we have to do what's required and also how we come up with the funds to do this. So that's been taking up a lot of my time, but otherwise, working with, we have, and the worksite product presentation, I'm dealing with a lot of personal meetings, Solid Waste Committee, we're trying to get those folks up and going again, reestablish that board. We'll talk a little bit about that later. Central line concerns, we shared those out with the SEC, I met with Commerce and Policy Office, I've been doing personal evaluation, personal meetings, planning sessions, working with, redistricting with West Pymont, registrar, text mapping. We had a meeting with A, a Zoom meeting with those folks and maybe bringing those on as a vendor, or I definitely had them to our vendor list since they have a lot of things taken off, whether we're recommending power group, so we definitely met with those folks and our, had them to our list. So that's where I am heading up today.
All right. Supervisor's report, Mr. Simmons?
I'm not in committee, Mr.
All right, Mr. Kendrick?
We had a West Pymont plan in district, it was a good one. Obviously updates on the broadband grant and progress on that. I like that you.
All right, great. Ms. Tywalt?
I attended the Tourism Advisory Council meeting, they reviewed a couple of sponsorship applications, they decided to prevent the small business grant application, so they're in the review process with that to this point. Talked about their different publications that they are advertising in, they did ask a question about bringing the parks back under the county, and that will be done during budget discussions, we'll speak about that, so I want to deliver everybody about that. I did not attend the West Pymont district meeting, due to illness at the ARBA meeting and I think that's it.
Mr. Perry?
So with the Recreation Department, I think they have a lot of issues with their youth, their boys, basketball specifically, a lot of pains, but it's been resolved, so even though this was a rough year for them, the, hammered out as soon as they can and ready for the future and they're rolling with the, going into the next seasons. They're also mentioning having set dates for specific seasons, that's one of the reasons why they got the problem. So a lot of that's been hammered out and a lot of work processed there. And of course, money for parks, they're encouraging park committees and parks to kind of have their own fundraisers and stuff to improve individual level parks. Met with the staff, staff's COVID procedures are more strict than most other places, which has thrown a lot of issues, especially working with our kids here in our schools. However, they did applaud Patrick Springs, I think, just the way it's set up by design has helped them successfully continue to provide services, at least some parts of our county. And of course, they're looking forward to getting through that and continuing to enroll in services. Of course, the planning commission, their comprehensive plans, very excited to have something together and it's a living document and they're already excited to keep the ball rolling, got to work for the team, bringing on the twin teams, they were excited for that. And then tomorrow, I'll sit in on the Leo Zoom meeting.
Okay, thank you. It is great, but getting the comprehensive plan together, kudos to them. I was in personnel meetings, I forgot what else.
ARBA.
ARBA and, you know, different meetings, so. Now we've moved into a closed meeting. Do we have a motion?
Yep, yes, sir. You'll be in motion to enter closed meeting for limited purpose of discussing potential hiring, review, emergency management position pursuant to two point two thirty-seven eleven eighty-one to discuss issues regarding possible acquisition of real property for a public purpose in the town of Stewart pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven eleven eighty-three and consultation with legal counsel, a part in specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice pursuant to impropriety pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven eleven A eighteen for eight.
I'll make that motion.
Second, second. Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Tywalt?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
I'll vote aye also. So we are now moving into closed session.